Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 9th, 2024 New Bern Board of Alderman meeting. The prayer tonight will be given by Alderman Royal.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor. This evening, our prayer will be offered by the Reverend Carl Kennedy. He is the pastor of the Star of Zion Missionary Baptist Church and also a member of East Coast Coalition of Pastors, Reverend Kennedy.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come as humble as we know how. Right now, Lord, we ask you to pour out your Spirit upon this meeting, Lord. Let us remember we are here to help those that are less fortunate and those that are in need, Lord, that the decision may be benefit for everyone in the community, Father. That's the ones that's on the board, Lord, and test their hearts, Lord, and that their ears or eyes be open to what thus said in the Lord. So bless them in a manner way, Lord, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. If you would, please stand with me and pledge allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you would please call a roll.
Alderman Prill?
Here.
Alderman Royal?
Here.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Odom?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Here.
Alderman Best?
Present.
Alderman Brinson?
Here.
Okay, Board, number three is to approve the agenda. Staff has asked that we pull number eight. They expect that to be pushed to the August meeting, so if your spirit of your motion would include removing item number eight, please.
Mayor, forgive me for interrupting.
Sure.
This has already been noticed for tonight, I understand?
It was noticed for the last meeting.
It was, okay, and so we've got a bad notice, we've got a renotice anyway. Carry on there, sorry.
No problem.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as is, minus item number eight.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, agenda is approved. Next up is request and petition of citizens. Madam Clerk, do we have any?
We do not.
Okay. Next up would be the roll call for the consent agenda. Any items on the consent agenda you'd like to discuss? Not, we entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom? Yes, motion carries. Next up is item number nine, and I've got to note that item number nine and 10 can be combined if we'd like to, so I'll read them both. Item number nine is to consider adopting a resolution approving the sale of 910 Green Street, and item number 10 is consider adopting a resolution approving the sale of 408 Sutton's Alley. Mr. Hughes.
So BCJ Development LLC submitted a bid in the amount of $3,000 for the 910 Green Street parcel. This bid was advertised, but no upset bids were received. The parcel is a vacant .115 acre residential tract with a tax value of $6,000. It was acquired by the city and county in June of 2015 through tax foreclosure. If the property is sold for this amount, the city will receive $623.29, and the county will receive $2,376.71. On the next property, Lay Team and Remodelers LLC submitted a bid in the amount of $1,500 for the Sutton's Alley property. This bid was advertised, but no upset bids were received. This is a .03 acre commercial tract with a tax value of $3,000. It was acquired by the city and county in July of 2013 through tax foreclosure. If the property is sold for this amount, the city will receive $415.72, and the county will receive $1,084.28 from the proceeds.
Mr. Attorney, I have a question for you. I noticed that on item number 10, the potential purchaser, Lay Team and Remodelers LLC, is not registered with the state of North Carolina Secretary of State. Is that any onus on us?
Not a worry for us, a worry for them.
Okay.
Because without registering here, they don't have any liability protection.
Okay.
But it doesn't affect our transaction.
Okay, so if we do a transaction with an entity that's not really an entity, we're still good?
Yes.
Okay.
They're an entity just foreign to us.
Okay.
It's fine.
Board have any questions on item number nine or 10?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve a resolution of the sale of 910 Green Street as well as 408 Sutton's Alley.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on item number nine or 10? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is, so I've got also another note that items number 11, 12, 13, and 14 can all be combined if desired, so I'll read them all individually. Item number 11 is consider adopting an ordinance to amend and close the broadband project fund. Item number 12 is to consider adopting an ordinance to amend and close the Northwest Interceptor Project Fund. Item number 13 is to consider adopting an ordinance to amend the 212 Kale Road Project Fund, and item number 14 is consider adopting an ordinance to amend the Township Seven Sewer Improvements Project Fund, and I believe Ms. Ostrom is going to handle all of those.
Okay, the Make Ready bought public infrastructure and property and service provider project was established back in 2021 with a budget of 7.2 million. It was reduced already to 3 million based on revised estimates. After reviewing the expenditures and the anticipated future activity, it does not seem that this meets the requirement of a project fund, so therefore we've charged those expenses back to the respective operating funds and are asking to close the fund out. As for number 12, the Northwest Interceptor Rehabilitation Phase Two Project Fund, established in April 26, 2022, is now complete. That total cost was $1,267,456.91, so I've asked to close that fund. The 212 Kale Road Project Fund, number 13, is just amending the budget to include the 2.2 million in financing. The original budget started off at $2 million, so we're just adding that $200,000 to recognize that additional financing. And then number 14 is the Township Seven Sewer Improvements Fund, and that one is to realign that budget to the revenues and expenditures of $9,714,139.
Any questions?
Mayor, if there's no questions, I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting an ordinance to amend and close the broadband project fund, also to adopt an ordinance to amend and close the Northwest Interceptor Project Fund, adopt an ordinance to amend the 212 Kale Road Project Fund, and adopt an ordinance to amend the Township Seven Sewer Improvements Project Fund.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes. Sorry.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is item number 15, appointments. I know it's that time of year, we have quite a few, so I'll just start at one end and go to the other if you have any. Alderman Prill, any appointments tonight?
No.
Okay, Alderman Royal?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I would like to recommend Ms. Danielle Peoples to the Planning and Zoning Board. Ms. Peoples is here in the audience tonight. She brings a wealth of experience. She has background in infrastructure projects with Duke Energy and customer and regulatory assessments. I believe that she will be an asset to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Okay, have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations, you're now appointed. Any more? Any other appointments tonight? Alderman Royal?
No, sir.
All right, Alderman Astor, any appointments?
Yes, Mayor. Dave Fenner has recently had to retire as the Director for the Fireman Museum, Friends of the Fireman's Museum, and the Board of Directors from the Fireman's Museum has requested that the Board of Alderman appoint James McConnell to the Board. The field of vacancy, this is created by Wayne Youngest?
Youngest, Unexed. Yeah. Okay, so you have a motion to appoint Jim McConnell to replace Wayne Unexed?
Yes.
Mayor, that's actually Alderman Kinsey's appointment.
Is it?
Hideous.
Okay, well, now withdraw.
You want to second it?
If he does it, I'll second it.
Yes, I will appoint him.
Now second it.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Jim McConnell to the vacancy. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, he is appointed. Alderman Astor, any more?
None, sir.
Alderman Kinsey?
Well done.
No more then, you're good.
I'm good.
Okay, Alderman Best, any appointments?
No.
Alderman Brinson?
No.
Okay, next up is attorney's report.
Next report tonight, Mayor.
City manager's report.
Few things to cover with you. So last week, I emailed the monuments, memorials, markers, and plaques draft policy for your review. I did hear back from Alderman Brinson on Monday with some comments. Before I go over this, want to see, and I've also got a copy of that for you in front of you. Does anyone have any questions or anything you'd like to see adjusted in this before I make some comments?
I'm going to tell on myself and just say I haven't had a chance to look at it.
That's fine, and so basically what this does is policy spells out definitions for a variety of things, which you'll see, and it talks about the process, and the process is basically there's an application that will be available. Anyone that is interested in a memorial marker or monument on city property of the right of way, they would have to fill that out and provide the appropriate information that's requested, submit that to the city manager's office. Staff would then meet with the applicant to listen to their request. Depending on what the item is, it would go through that approval process. So one of the things we did carve out was a New Bern bear. We've got a history of New Bern bears in right of way or a few on city sidewalks. We're making the recommendation to have that be approved by the city manager, and really the only other thing that would be approved by on the staff level would be placement of monuments, memorials, and markers located in the street right of way that was initiated by city staff. And so some examples of that, and I'm going to give you two examples that we could think of. One was when the Andrews Chapel Historic Marker was damaged. It was located on Broad Street. Once that marker came back to the city to be replaced, staff looked at putting that on Hancock Street. So that didn't really need board approval for that. The other one is one we're getting ready to put back up, and that's the Battle of New Bern plaque, and that was located adjacent to the old Shriners waterfront lot, so we're going to be placing that back in the same general area. That's really the only thing we could think of for something like that, if something had come down or if the state reached out to us regarding a marker. Any other requests would go to the Board of Alderman for consideration. This policy does not include the naming of streets, buildings, facility rooms, and things like that. Any time that a request would come for that, that would be up to the Board of Alderman to determine how you'd like to proceed with that process. And I'll mention some things that Alderman Brinson did point out in this. Under item number three, community significance, and there were several things to look at when considering certain markers, what we had in here was to assure the significance of the event or person, as was stood the test of time, a project may only commemorate an event one year or older or a person one year more posthumously, and he had made the recommendation of at least five years. We also did indicate that under ownership, just because it's placed in a city right of way or city property, does not mean that the city would retain ownership and maintenance of it. One of the things we also asked for in the application process is whoever the applicant would be, they're going to have to show how it would be maintained in the future, and how long in the future that would be, that's still up in the air. But unless the Board of Alderman wanted to maintain ownership of anything in that right of way, then the maintenance would not be on the city.
Board have questions?
I'd like to add to that, and I'm sorry I failed to get back with you. Correct me if I'm wrong, it was my understanding, I thought that we was going to develop a blanket, so to speak, policy regarding city property and installing whatever the case might be there. Looking at the draft, and again, it's only a draft, but it seems like we are chasing a lot of things. We have to do an application, it has to go before you, it has to involve city staff, and if there's no conclusion, then it has to come back to the Board of Alderman. I thought that we were going to develop something that would eliminate a lot of that instead of a lot of details that we see in the draft.
Well, this would have to have details, otherwise someone could just say, I'd like to have this monument, and we don't have anything to show for it. So we're requesting an application so that if we do get someone that wants to put a monument up, we'll know exactly what they're looking for, we'll know exactly the location they're looking at, staff can vet that, so if it's going to be placed in a park or whatnot, we can look at the general area before that comes to the governing board for approval. It just spells out the detail of the vetting process.
So are we talking city property?
Anything in the city property or right of way, yes.
And that's what I thought we were eliminating. Monuments, whatever, city property. I thought we was going to develop something to bring closure to that and not turn, go back to another conversation.
That is not, I think, believe the direction I was given was to revisit the monuments, markers, policy. I did not, and if that was the direction of the board, I did not get that, that you wanted to eliminate.
Well, that's why I was asking for clarity, that was my thought on it.
Yeah, I'll try to provide a little bit of clarity. So I think whenever this came up originally, the manager had given us a draft to look at, and the board decided that night, and the clerk can correct me, I think we had decided that night, just bring anything to us if anybody wants to make a recommendation or have something. And I thought what we wanted to do here was to try to just stop anybody from wanting to do anything coming before the board. There would actually be some gatekeepers in the meantime before we got to that point. So I think that was the spirit of what we're doing just. And the board can certainly say no to this and just say we're not going to accept anything on city property, which is very easy and straightforward for us and staff, if that's the direction we want to go in.
And that's the direction I thought we were going in, that we were not going to be considering anything to go on city property.
I know one of the concerns that came up is the precedent that's been set in the past, because we didn't have a, we don't have a policy currently. So in the past, the bear, for example, that's in front of Mitchell's Hardware, there's some other ones that's around, they had the ability to put those bears up, and now if someone asks to have one, if our stance is no, then the business or resident across the street can say, well, how come they are able to have one and I'm not? And that's just the decision that the board made, and that's certainly, that's an option that we have for sure. So I think the manager was trying to give some clarity around that and some leeway in those certain situations, but.
Are there legal ramifications for us to just have a blanket policy that just says nothing, there's no issue with that?
Meaning nothing on public property or in the right of way?
Right.
Perfectly fine, and the board can always change its mind. The policy is the policy until the board changes the policy.
The, I guess one recommendation I would make, since we just got handed this tonight, I would recommend putting this on a future agenda so it can be in the package so the public can have opportunity if they want to look at it and provide some input. That way, there may be something that we're not thinking about. That'd be my only recommendation.
Well, we did not just, excuse me, but we did not just receive this tonight. City manager sent this out to us.
Or the public hasn't seen this?
No, that's not, I'm just, let me explain. The city manager sent this out to us prior to tonight's meeting. Now, of course, the public may not have had the chance.
They definitely haven't.
But it's not out there for the public to review, so that would be a good idea for the public to review, but I still, my stance on this is that we can tweak this policy, we can do whatever we want to do with this policy, but I just don't want this policy to include anything that's going to go on city property. That's the public, that's the citizens' property, it's public property.
Then my recommendation would be somebody make a motion tonight that the board's policy, this board's policy going forward is no monument or markers, memorial, or plaque on public property, and then we could put this to rest tonight if you'd like to do that.
Does any of the other board members want to comment on this or? I agree, I'm in agreement with that, because you're spending time coming in to maintain and upkeep it, and then you're looking at other folks wanting to come in and do the same thing. So we need to have a policy in place to protect the city and what we do.
So the board can think about a few other items. The jet that sits at Lawson's Creek Park, based off of the conversations we're having tonight, that jet would not be there. The ship handling machine that's sitting at Lawson's Creek Park would not be there. Foster, are there any other things that have been donated to the city?
Would they not be grandfathered in?
They would be, but I'm saying that if we take this policy or this stance tonight, then if somebody in the future wants to donate something to the city, then our policy is no.
We can revise our policy to include anything that city related.
Another example is Council Bluff Green several years ago, and that was renovated, and there's a large marker out there commemorating that that lists all the sponsors on that. It's unlike bricks on papers in the walkway or anything, but those are some good examples.
So you're really not getting away from that, if you're going to continue to add something in, it's either have something in place to do it or not. Well, I'm looking at it from perspective of citizens that come forth and want to put monuments, plaques, or whatever, not anything that's pertaining to actual the city, as the mayor says, the plane not there, anything that was given or donated to the city, but just for future citizens coming forth and wanting to ask to have a monument or plaque or something erected, that's not. I don't have a problem with making that consideration for this policy.
How about something like a storyboard or donors' names or something like? I'm thinking more of the fish and pier. You know, will they be able to do a storyboard, given the list of the names of the donors of that?
That's a city project, so yes.
Okay, so a city project, so the jet would actually have been excluded as well from the policy.
Okay.
Any comments on the bears, on how you'd like to say anything with that?
Me personally, I disagree. I mean, this city's known for bears. I mean, there's a map that people go around the city and they find these bears, and to say no when somebody wants to spend a few thousand dollars to have one out in front.
Well, I agree with you on that. I think we should include the bears because within this information that the city manager gave to us, that would be something that's, and especially for the bear that they wanted to put downtown, that would be with under the HPC to make the determinations to make sure that everything is in compliance and ADA and ordinance wise. Correct, city manager?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say the draft policy right now says it's delegated to the city manager rather than the board, so, for bears. It's just to give my two cents, you know, kind of coming from a military perspective and a inspector general perspective, it's good to have a policy, even if it is no. A written policy is what I would say, because it gives a staff, you know, something to lean on and give to people and say, hey, you know, this is our policy. And I think including the bears in that policy would be good. So I'm more of the idea that instead of just passing a motion tonight and saying, hey, we're going to say no to everything, I'm okay with that, but I'd rather have something written to give to staff to say that that's our policy, and then I think we'd need to do that anyway for the bears and that process of approval. So I'm more of a process guy, and so this was helpful for the process, even if the answer's going to be no. Just my two cents.
City attorney?
Yes, sir.
So we can go ahead and put this to rest tonight and put things in place that we can have the bears in and have a policy in place that we have something to go by to answer whatever question may come before us.
Yes, sir, I think we can do everything that everyone has said. If the motion is to prohibit monuments, et cetera, on public property, including right of ways, other than city sponsored projects and bears, and put that in writing as a policy, that would memorialize the motion and satisfy everyone's thinking, I think, no.
Well said, so moved.
Second.
Are you good with that, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next item I have, it's all at time again, so for the last few years, we have had an audit committee consisting of at least three Aldermen. Last year, we had Alderman Royal, Alderman Brinson, and the mayor that served on that committee, so I'd like to see if anyone would like to serve on this year's committee.
What does it entail again? I don't even remember.
It entails of attending at least two or three meetings during the audit process, and it's painless, but you get to sit through some presentations by our auditor and listen to the finance director and finance staff going through the process.
And when is this scheduled?
No meetings have been scheduled yet, but there will probably be at least two or three that will occur before the audit is submitted to the state, which will be this fall.
This fall?
Well, there's actually three meetings. One will be, one can be done with Zoom, and that will be the initial meeting, the introduction meeting, and that should be in the next few weeks. And then the second one will be about midway through the audit, they'll give an update, and then the last one is right before they present to the board, which will be probably in November, October, November timeframe.
Well, I'm willing to share the pain and volunteer to sit on the audit committee if more.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman Prill. Is anyone else?
I'm already, I'm already, thank you. Who already served, so.
You can add me to the list if I can make it, I will certainly try to make it.
And you may add me also.
Okay, there we go. Very good, we have three, thank you.
Events notice, please.
That's all tonight, sir.
Okay, we'll go to new business, Alderman Prill.
Nothing tonight.
Alderman Royal?
Nothing tonight.
Alderman Astor?
Yes, sir, I've got a question for the city attorney. I've received an email, and actually signed by several people, that was requesting some information about bars in the downtown area. Their concern is that we have another store in the downtown area that is closing. I don't have a clue which one it is, but there's a store closing, and they're under the impression that a bar was going to purchase it, go in there, and their concern is the number of bars that are in the downtown area. Can we or can we not regulate the number of bars in the downtown area?
Right, yes, sir. That question has come up a lot in the last few years. In our state, we have a comprehensive statute where the state regulates the sale of alcohol, and when you have such a statute, it preempts the local government from regulating alcohol in any way, actually including zoning. The state alcohol statute says that the state must consider our zoning, but they can override it if they want, that's the power they have. So the short answer is no. So the short answer is no. The state controls that. I have noticed in the last 10 years, I've not seen a situation where the state has not honored the zoning regulation, even though they have the ability to ignore it. But beyond the zoning, we have no authority to regulate.
So a new bar that wants to open up, they have to have a LE inspection?
Yes, sir.
Have to have a fire department inspection?
Yes, sir.
And maybe a building?
All those things. All the permits for a commercial business plus the ABC permit.
Okay. I didn't realize that we had, I didn't really think that we had that many bars in the downtown area. I know we have a lot of restaurants that serve alcohol.
Right, sure.
But just straight bars and?
Yeah, I'm not kind of myself, I'm not sure either. Certainly more entertainment activities, restaurants and bars.
But the bottom line is, we cannot regulate it.
No, sir.
Thank you very much. I have nothing else.
Alderman Kinsey?
Mr. Foster, we spoke about this possibility that we might, well, I'm not quite sure, that the Family Dollar eat is closing down out around the country. And what do you think lightly with the one that we have here on this Boulevard? Because I think they're pretty much a brother or sister store, the Dollar Tree and the Family Dollar. Is, could you explain any of that?
Oh, the potential for them closing?
What, have you heard of?
We have not heard anything on that store, but we can certainly check into that.
Because a lot of them are closing, and the Rite Aid's are closing up out through the country. And I didn't know what direction are they headed, are they headed this direction here, you know? So if you can keep us posted on that, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, we can do some research on that.
Okay.
Is that all, sir?
Yes, yes, sir.
Alderman Best?
Yes, Mr. Hughes, I'm going to direct this to you. I've gotten numerous calls, citizens. Got a little alarm because of the rain that we had this past weekend. And at what point are, I wish George would have been here tonight, but at what point are the city at, for as maintenance on the streets, the, what do you call them? The drain pipes? I don't know what they're called. The ones with the real heavy tops on them, you know what I'm talking about? Okay, and they're talking about a lot of straw, leaves, trash, and stuff is blocking those drains and it's causing a problem for the water to flow. So I didn't know, and I'm pretty sure it's probably something all over the city. At what point are Public Works or Mr. Avery Smith, they're looking into that? Because, you know, we're into hurricane season, they started early this year. And a lot of people are getting a little bit antsy and upset about the water conditions within their communities. So it's...
Yes, ma'am, so I did have a conversation with George Schaus about this. That is something that the stormwater crew and public works staff look at on a regular basis. Whenever they're driving around, if they see a blocked area, they clean that out. This past weekend, in certain areas of town, we had for the first rain up to an inch and a half of rain. And for the one yesterday, up to an inch and a half of rain. There was also a lot of wind this past weekend. And so that has a tendency to put pine straw, things like that in that drain grate. And we actually, I think, one of the most significant flooding we saw in any one area was here at the traffic circle, we're on South Front Street, and a piece of plastic, it had been, the wind had blown that over a drain grate and created all of that flooding in that general area. So the crews are working on that.
I had two calls from South Carolina Avenue and from Sunnyside. South Carolina Avenue and Beach Street, that was one of the areas where they were saying that they could really see the water, the blockage over there. So if Public Works can, somebody go out and take a look at South Carolina Avenue, I would appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
The other thing I had was, oh yeah, so again, Mr. Hughes, when will, I know we discussed it, at what length will, what timeframe are we looking at for coming back before this board to discuss more in detail about the electric rates and the riders? Because I'm getting a lot of phone calls from people that wanting to know what's going on. They know about the rate increase, which was effective July 1, but they're wanting to know what's going to happen with the riders. How will they be affected with the riders' wind? So do you have any idea when this board, when we need to come back and meet and further discuss that?
So this board did adopt a 6% increase. No riders were included.
Right.
That was a 6% increase. Now, we will be coming back to the board, hopefully in the form of a workshop. It could be at some point in August or the 1st of September when we do this. Once we hear from Electric Cities, if we have another pass on from 2023, I believe, from Book Energy. So that could be a rider, and we will discuss how we're proposing to pass that rider along to the customer at that time. So that will be coming up.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want the general public to hear. And that's it, that's all I have.
Alderman Brinson?
No, 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 sir. The only thing I have, I'd be in trouble if I didn't, although I know she's not watching, it's my wife's birthday. Happy birthday to my bride. And do we need a closed session?
Yes, sir, I entertain a closed session pursuant to 143 1311 a3 to maintain our attorney's client privilege and pursuant to 143 1311 a5 to discuss the potential acquisition of real property.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Motion and second, going to a closed session. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in closed session. Okay, we're back in open session. Mr. Attorney?
May I, may I have this on the page? On the public hearing issue, the annexation that was on tonight's agenda. My members of the board, on the agenda earlier was the public hearing that was scheduled for tonight. It turns out, the clerk reviewed the record, and that was properly noticed for tonight. Those notices run several hundred dollars.
Couple hundred at least.
Yeah, two or three hundred bucks. And the reason I interrupted you during that was to try to save that few hundred dollars. If the board wanted to, you can open that public hearing and continue it to the next meeting. And that will avoid any further notice being published. I noticed that there was no one in the audience tonight to come speak on that, so I don't think anybody would be put out or offended that they missed their chance to speak. So you have two options, you can leave things the way they are, or somebody can make a motion to rescind the earlier motion to pull that off the agenda, open the public hearing, then a motion to continue the public hearing to next meeting.
And just for clarity, we don't know that it'll be ready for the next meeting.
That's true.
Just trying to get a survey.
And you can keep continuing it. The developer needs a survey, so it's entirely up to you.
I'll just state this, I appreciate us wanting to look after every dollar, but for the potential negative blowback from coming out of a closed session to do this, I personally don't think it's worth it. We've already made the motion and to pull it. I just think we need to reissue it like we did, but that's the board's decision.
And the fact that it may not be ready next meeting?
For sure. Understood.
Does anybody have any different opinion?
Okay, anything else?
That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, if not, I entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Alderman Astor, a second by Alderman Kinsey. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.